Yeah, you said 500 applicants for 82 units, is that what you said? For eight units? Oh my goodness. Wow.
Wow.
Did she, I have not received anything. Did she email something maybe that I missed?
Not recently, but she wasn't able.
Oh, yes, you're right. Okay. All right. Here we go. I'd like to call to order the East Point Planning Commission's special meeting for June 10th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Hall-Raiford?
Here.
Mr. Stokes?
Here.
Mrs. Moody?
Here.
Mr. Sasek?
Here.
Ms. Yulinski here, and Chairman DeHunt?
Here. Moving on, can I get a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
We have motion, do we have support?
Support.
We have motion and support. Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sasek?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall-Raiford?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Commissioner Yulinski, yes, and Chairman DeHunt?
Yes. Moving on to new business, Mr. Myers? I'll let you make the introductions, if I may, or should we let him do it?
I'll do it. So we wanted to, we're very pleased for tonight. They have a very thoughtful, short presentation. But I wanted TPMA, the consultants that are doing the master plan and the economic development and place-making strategy plan together. We've had some incredible sharing of resources. They've already done a large amount of research, as you guys will see. So hopefully, if you guys, maybe the planning commission, if you would introduce yourselves first. They can, as you can see what they can see, and they'll be doing some screen sharing. But maybe if you guys introduce yourself, and then if you do have questions, maybe just mention your name, so that they know who they're talking to.
All right. And then are we going to see you folks in person at some point?
Yep. In September, they're coming for a whole series of meetings and...
Yeah, when I'll be out of town.
Just September 22nd?
Probably.
23rd? No.
Probably.
You don't have a choice.
Tell that to my customers. Okay. Let's start at the end.
Sheila Yulinski? Wanda Moody?
Mary Hall-Raiford?
John D. Hunt? Gary Sasek?
Alex Stokes?
Well, they can't see me, so let me... Richard Albright, City Attorney?
Look at him photobombing. Your turn.
Yeah, very good. Well, very nice to meet you all. Thank you so much for having us today. My name's Aaron Finley. I'm the Director of Housing and Community Development at TPMA, and serving as the project lead for the master plan components of this project. Teresa, I'll hand it to you.
Hi, good evening. You all sound like you have a lot of fun over there. I'm Teresa Nortillo. I'm the Director of Economic Development for TPMA. And I will be directing and managing the ED strategic plan. So I'll turn that over to Mariah.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mariah Taft, and I'm going to be the engagement lead kind of for both of these projects. So excited to kind of get these efforts aligned and engage with the community there in East Point.
Very good. So who's going to lead us off?
Yeah, I'm happy to get, I'm happy to get us started. I am going to try to fight some technology, but I think I've got this working. Can everybody see our slide deck right now?
Yes.
Somewhere?
And will you be providing this deck for public consumption?
Sure, we'd be happy to provide the deck, yeah, when we're, when we're done today, not a problem.
Good.
But everybody can see it, okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? Okay, wonderful. So just a real quick start, we already kind of introduced ourselves, so we can move somewhat quickly through some of these first handful of slides. Our mission today is to kind of just introduce ourselves, introduce the project, what we're looking to accomplish in our, you know, the coming months. And as we already talked about, we'll look for the opportunity to be there in person in September. I do want to talk just briefly, as of course it is, they would like me to do about TPMA. So we are a 35-year-old consulting firm. We're based in Indianapolis, Indiana, but we are fully remote, national firm. And we've kind of always existed at the kind of intersection of economic development, workforce development, program evaluation, and, you know, and also community development, which is what brings us here today. You know, I'll keep moving along. We already introduced the three of us. We do have three other members of the team, our urban planner, who's joining us from our friends over at Arcadis, Connor Waddell and Aaron Brown. You'll have the opportunity, presumably, as we can play and meet with you all regularly, to be introduced to them as well. So to get us starting, I'll hand it over here to Teresa Nortillo to talk about the economic development components.
Yes, thank you, Aaron. So as, as you know, this is a big piece of the master plan process, is the economic development and place-making strategy. And there you'll see the components of the plan. Just real briefly, we look at what we call quantitative benchmarking data, which is the hard numbers and where we go to BLS and census, and we get some really hard numbers to look at what is really happening economically on the baseline for East Point. And then we look at some community engagement, which is the qualitative piece. And that's where the stakeholder engagement and the place-making questions start coming around. But in terms of the quantitative, I wanted to address what we feel is probably a bigger focus that we're going to be looking at, is the retail component that East Point has. And we'll look at voids in the retail market and where we can address those voids, how we can address those voids, what the demand for certain products look like, certain retail companies and businesses look like. And then we'll put some strategies together on how to attract those retail components. We'll also look at other areas of the land use, maybe some mixed use, and small sections of, of other commercial corridors. And we'll look at where, what businesses might fit there as well. And then from the quantitative data points, and then the qualitative with the community engagement and the place-making, we will pull together and look at the SWOT, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and how that, how our data flows into those, the SWOT. And then from there, we'll make some recommendation, recommendations based on our findings and implementation strategies. And I, I want to say that I think what we've found in our client outcomes, that our implementation strategies really are key in producing a report that doesn't just sit. So we are very mindful of producing and developing some really strategic and useful implementation strategies for our clients. And that's something we really put a high value on. So those will be in there as well.
I don't mean to interrupt for a second, but I just like a little kid passing notes. I had to pass a note to Sheila. The last time we did this, nobody ever talked about any of this when we put our last master plan together. And now I'm hearing things that are kind of making my heart, heart hurt from seven years ago.
TPMA is well aware of the shortfalls of the past plan.
One of the things we're really excited to do, and as Teresa kind of mentioned, as we think about the economic development, strategy, place-making strategy, but also as the master plan is, and we're about to kind of go over our approach to that as well. One of the things that we take pride in, quite frankly, is doing everything we can, even though we are a fully remote firm. None of us live there in East Point. But we really take pride in doing everything we can to understand the very kind of specific quality and character and needs and obstacles and all the kinds of things that are specific to East Point. Because we feel, quite frankly, that we can't really put together any kinds of meaningful strategies, meaningful plans for you without doing that. And so if there was a situation in the past where maybe it didn't feel like there was an attempt to really kind of understand things on the ground, that's really one of the things that we really focus on in our approach to this. So thank you for, for saying that. Hopefully, we can not make your heart hurt anymore as we move through our process. So just to look then, that was the kind of economic development strategic plan and place-making strategy. Those are some components. As we've heard, a lot of you are very kind of well aware and very interested in economic developments. We didn't, maybe just, you know, dwell on every single component of, of that part of our project here. But we do also have a master plan. There's a lot of components in the master planning process, of course, that are, you know, mandated by the state of Michigan, and we're going to touch on all of those things. But also, we have reviewed your existing master plan and really want to think about how we can understand where East Point was, maybe the last time we went through this process, where we are now, where we want to go, and how we're going to get there. And those, of course, are the components of the master plan, which is the document and policy guide designed to help communities create a vision. And that's the really important thing, right? And that's why we're talking to you now. That's why we're going to be there in September. We've got surveys and interviews and lots of engagements, again, Mariah will share with you about that. But really, it's about understanding and helping to create that vision, understanding, as I said, where we are now, where we want to go, and how we get there. These are the main, main points that you're going to kind of keep hearing those kinds of questions come up in a variety of different ways and wordings and about different subjects. But ultimately, these are the core questions that we're trying to figure out. What are we going to look like at the end, you know, at the, over the timeframe of this master plan? What does success look like as well? You'll, we'll give you a chance to answer a lot of those questions even here today, just as we're getting going on our process. So the components of a master plan, just as we looked at the economic development strategic plan, we'll look at, of course, public facilities, community services, transportation. I know there's been a lot of changes recently, projects underway, thinking about transportation in and around the East Point area. Of course, economic development, which we already heard about, infrastructure, environment and natural, natural resources. Obviously, we're going to give a, a good data overview of the community profile. We'll look at just a, just the, the surface level, a couple data points here today. And then really, kind of, I think importantly, one of the major things that we're hearing that is an issue is that we want to take a real deep dive and look at is, of course, land use. Obviously, we know the zoning map was recently updated, but really just looking at that, what I like to call the housing ecosystem, right? It's not just maybe whatever, affordable housing, workforce housing, but really all of the components of housing. Understanding that's a big area of focus as we think about the master plan. We think about the kind of future and how we can enable it and enact it in East Point. So with that being said, Mariah, I'd be happy to hand over to you to talk a little bit about our engagement efforts.
Absolutely. So really, when we're looking at the, the master plan engagement is a really important part of that because ultimately, we want this master plan to reflect the community's desired direction for the future, right? So how are, how are the people who live and love East Point envisioning their community in the future? And how, and then how do we get there? And that's kind of our job is, we can't do that without talking to people. So a couple of the ways that we're going to do that. We are going to be doing a community survey, so open to the public. We are going, we're hoping to launch that late August, early September, sometime before we're there in person, so that we can kind of help build some of the buzz around it while we're there in person. We're going to be doing open houses. We'll do two open houses when we are there in person in September. Those are going to be open to the community, but again, there's going to be some targeted outreach to make sure that we have some key stakeholders available at those. We're going to be doing some in-person focus groups to make sure that we get some depth of understanding on some tricky topics. The two that we're going to be focusing on are housing and land use and then economic development. And again, we will touch on those topics in those open houses. We just want to make sure that we can get some really focused conversation with those as well. Also, while our team is there in person, we're going to be doing some site visits. So I, you know, we're kind of the audience for that, making sure that we understand some of the physical places around East Point. We'll be following up with some key stakeholders with one-on-one or maybe small group interviews. Those will be some of the subject matter experts, for example, maybe transportation or infrastructure kind of as needed. And then looking towards the end, we're looking in early 2026 for being back on the ground and having another check-in towards the end of the process with stakeholders.
Thank you so much, Mariah. So with that, we do want to just kind of take a, a little bit of, not a step back necessarily to the old plan, but want to just kind of look at just a very quick overview of a couple data points that we thought might be of interest to share with you today. A lot of the data does come from the US Census Bureau, the American Community Survey. The 2023 numbers are the most recent ones. At some point in this process, I think the 2024 estimates will come out, and then we can kind of take a look at where to incorporate those as well. And then really importantly, and we'll look towards the, as we look through the data, SEMCOG, I'm sure you're all very familiar with SEMCOG. They do a fantastic job, especially in kind of maintaining and presenting a lot of this data. So some of the data comes from there as well. So as we look over the last 13 years, we do see a change in population that is positive. You'll, again, probably don't want to tell you, but there was declining population for quite some time. But we're on our way, kind of back up, 5% growth over that 13-year period, and forecasted growth to continue. So even though we're kind of landlocked, I guess, if you want to say, there in East Point, you know, we have a lot of the developable lands, kind of already spoken for, already developed, still expecting the possibility of continued growth into the future. This is, of course, a majority-minority district, as again, I'm sure you're all well aware. Also, majority female area there in East Point as well. Median age 36.4, relatively young, actually, by comparison to some other markets that we work with. But a couple of things that we definitely want to kind of hone in on, as we think about economic development, which also, of course, has that workforce development component. We're also going to think a little bit about some wages and household incomes as we look at some of these numbers. But just about 15% of the 25-year and older population has a bachelor's degree. You will see that correlated in a lot of cases with higher, or, you know, bachelor's degree correlating with higher wage jobs. And so we want to kind of notice some trends in this and see if there are some goals we want to put around, maybe trying to attract higher income, higher wage workforce. There has been almost a 30% change in nominal household income, but that's over a 13-year period. So that is growth. There's no doubt about it. Like to see that continue to climb. But, you know, how that compares to kind of cost of living and, and the change of housing costs, which of course is, is my kind of pet project, I guess, is housing. So we're going to take a look at that here as well. Looking at some of the economic development metrics, things that we're going to look at. Again, we are seeing a forecasted growth in jobs in the coming years and decades. As Teresa mentioned at the front end, we are looking at an industry mix that includes mostly, you know, the highest industry by employment are the retail trades. Of course, you see medical facilities and hospitals as well employing, you know, about 1,200 people there in East Point. Leisure and hospitality, the kind of grab bag, other services, not much, I guess, to say quite about that just yet. We'll have to, you know, kind of pull that open a little bit. But those are the top industries by employment. That, those are projections for this year, of course, as the year-end numbers aren't out yet. Looking, yeah, please, Teresa, jump in. You're muted. You're muted?
I, I just wanted to jump in and say that in our economic development strategy and looking at some of the quantitative data points, we'll also look at what we call labor participation rate, which really is the key compo, or the key data point in terms of labor and unemployment. And that is hovering around 62%, which is good. But the median income in the jobs are 58,000, so that, that's not so good. What, what that means in, in, in summary is that we have a lot of low-end jobs, low-income jobs. And so in terms of our, our strategic plan, our goal is to address how do we raise that median income and thus raise the disposable income into the community. So that's one point I wanted to, to really hone in on as well.
Yeah, absolutely, Teresa. Thank you. And you know, some, there's just some interesting statistics that might be worth noting here. We look at this jobs per acre. This is a 2019 number. Some of these, our access to data is lagging in a lot of cases. We do the best we can with the most recent information we have available. This one comes from the Michigan Labor Market Information from the state there. It's 3.14 jobs per acre. That is higher than the region and the county. The region is just at 1.01. Macon County there is at 1.48, so much more kind of jobs per acre than, you know, some of the comps we would look at, which is the region, the county as a whole. The unemployment rate is 10 and a half in 2024. This is, you know, in some ways, a, a number we want to pay attention to. The county's unemployment rate is less than half of that. It's at 4.5%. So this is a relatively high unemployment rate, something we, we want to pay attention to, and especially in line with a lot of things that Teresa said about kind of looking not just at the jobs, but also the kind of jobs. Poverty is up. So in 2010, which was a while ago, we had a poverty rate of just about 13%. It's up to 18.2% here. I do want to caution a little bit about looking at some, some of the numbers you're looking at, the kind of the vintage. Some of the years are, are a little bit all over the place. You see 2019, 2024, 2023. Can be quite tricky and nuanced to try to compare almost like pre-COVID, I guess, if you will, numbers to our current numbers. So we'll always want to kind of give you an idea about what those numbers are, you know, and what the vintage of them is. But nonetheless, we are seeing almost one in five East Point residents living in poverty as of 2023. So it's a pretty high number. And again, one of the things that hopefully a master plan can start to hone in on and think about strategies for addressing. So that's a quick look at the numbers. And I, but we wanted to, we didn't just want to completely just talk at you this whole time. So we do want to pause and kind of get a little bit of your response to what you're seeing here and think about what we want a master plan to look at. So, Mariah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I figured this would be a good opportunity to get to know you all and kind of what some of your priorities are going to be. So one of the first questions we have is just as you're thinking through like economic development and looking through some of the, the brief overview of things that we just shared. In the next 15 years, which is kind of what we're going to be, one of the chunks of time that we're focusing on in this master plan, what would be your number one goal in terms of economic development for East Point? So in 15 years, what would, what's one thing we would hope the master plan could help us accomplish?
A social district.
A social district.
Better housing.
Community place or community district, community, social, or unpack that a little bit more?
More social, like where it's walkable, people can go for, you know, to eat or to have beverages, kind of like gathering spaces. You know, walkability seems to be the great thing for neighborhoods. I love walkability. I, I think if people can get where they need to go, and especially if you're going to earmark on that poverty, a lot of those people don't have cars either, so, you know, transit systems and just places for them to gather socially.
Yes, understood. Thank you very much.
And good parks, you know, things for, for them to do, which we have been working on, which are really coming along very nicely. And people to behave, but we can't control that, but...
There, there is a great example of social districts that do not disrupt the flow of traffic in Bay City, Michigan. You will see that they roll up parts of their curbs, and they will take a few parking spaces, but they do not disrupt traffic flow. And it does not appear to create any sort of difficulty where they're able to park on side streets and things of that nature. Because I know that there's been some discussion of the narrowing of roads and things like that when you can in fact see that certain communities are able to affect social districts without narrowing roads and taking roads away.
And I think in the past too, for the social, social districts, it has been touched upon for the Kelly Road area, like from Nine Mile to Eight Mile, that, you know, that's kind of like a gateway. And I think there's projects going on, working with Detroit and Harper Woods, to really revitalize and, and get that, you know, up and running and, and make it a great gateway all the way down. So to keep improving on that, I think is a good thing because people want places to go. They want to have activities to do, and they don't always want to travel too far to do it.
That brings up a question for me about retail. Because we don't have a lot of retail stores where people can run out and get...
I can hear you just fine.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to move closer to the microphone.
No, it's fine. We can hear you.
But, you know, just little things that people need, other than groceries, that makes it easier for everyone to take care of their needs without, especially for those who may not have transportation, to grab a neighbor and something and go get what they need. But that's important. I know it's important to me because I can't find anything I want without driving outside of Roseville, actually.
Another thing that's important in my, my...
And we will, yeah, part of the strategic plan and the quantitative data collection, we'll look at those nodes of, of retail and what areas do they serve? And where is the gap, more like, is there a desert somewhere of certain items or like a grocery? or like a grocery store like you mentioned or um some other, like a pharmacy or something? So we'll look at those, you know, concentrated retail sections and find out what's missing there and looking at the the trade areas themselves and how do we address those those gaps?
As I was mentioning, one of the things that can be very important here within the city is uh we can see here that the median age is thirty-six point four. So that means that there's young families here that they are more than likely in the childbearing stage. So we need to have some form of recreational facilities within the city that families can bring their young children to when they get to be that age. So that that's very important because you don't want the the young families to have children of, well, we want them to have children, of course. But uh we would not want them to just go to the surrounding cities for recreational uh experiences. So that's very important too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think one of the biggest things that crosses my mind is how to draw these businesses in. Um, because if we can get them here, I mean, there's all kinds of places I'd like to seek them. And like, we used to have this great market on Kelly and Nine Mile that, you know, was always busy. Um, but he retired and closed the place. No one's ever replaced it. Um, drawing in in business, I I think is the key to keep moving forward with a lot of things.
I would go so far as to say that the businesses that we draw into this community need to be targeted towards the community at large, not targeted towards certain demographics, not targeted towards one specific thing. You know, when I was a kid, you could go down Grashit and go to a butcher shop. You could go across the street uh and go to the dime store, if anybody remembers what those are anymore. You could go across the street and buy a decent pair of shoes. And we were cutting edge. We had an adult theater down there too. I mean, if you were old enough. But the little old church ladies ran them out of town. So, you know, but we, you've gotta be able to.
To be clear, we don't want that back.
We don't want that back, no. Nor do we want an amusement park. Um, but we need businesses that have the chops and the longevity to sink roots here. Uh, so often you see these small businesses that will pop up for six months and then on the seventh month, the windows are 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 butcher blocked and they're gone because they don't have a business plan. They don't know who they're marketing to. They're targeting whatever the demographic is and they're not succeeding. We need businesses that come to the city to talk to everybody and to be successful for everybody. Uh, and that's not an easy task right now.
Yeah.
And one thing we do have a a lot of is um that the uh social halls, the the party places. Um, we don't need more of that type of business. We need good traditional foundation growing businesses, like an Aket's Pie. I would love an Aket's Pie here.
Uh, any else, uh, before we kind of move on and look at land use and housing next? We wanted to give a chance if anybody had anything else to share uh about economic development successes.
I don't know if this is appropriate at this time, but also linking back to the businesses, we really need businesses and community residents to take pride in what they're offering to the community. I, so many of these businesses come in right now and they let the property fall apart. And in order to be a viable community, you have to be a pleasant appearing community. And a lot of times, we don't have that right now and that that mindset has to change in the process.
Gotcha.
I would, I would echo a lot of the same uh comments that the other commissioners made. Uh, specifically the business growth and development is what I'd like to see happen.
Wonderful. This, this is all really helpful. Uh, so thank you so much. Okay.
If you're looking for a comparative community to where you are in now, think of the Beach Grove area and the south side of Indianapolis. That's what you're dealing with. You're dealing with great opportunity, uh, but a lot of empty spaces. I guess it's helpful that I know the area a little bit.
He travels, uh, if I may, Mr. Chair. Uh, at TPMA, you thought there was gonna be no, you know, involvement. You know, you were worried about questions. These guys have opinions. We love them.
Well, we wanted to give an opportunity. We didn't wanna just be the only ones talking, so we, I'd really appreciate it. Um, so again, get to kind of my, my favorite topic, uh, which is, let's just land use and housing. Um, this is a really kind of a always fascinating and always challenging uh subject to talk about. Um, but we wanna just look a little bit at again, a very high level, a couple of little data points to maybe uh and then hear more about kind of your goals in this space. Uh, but over seventy-five percent, almost eighty percent, somewhere in between there, housing built before nineteen sixty. Probably not a surprise. We understand when the area really kind of was booming and a lot of these homes were being built, uh, area was growing. But this, immediately when I see this is a big number of uh housing that's, you know, over essentially sixty years old. Uh, so we wanna think a little bit about the condition of the housing that exists, both for sale and for rent. Uh, and think about, you know, opportunities to uh potentially create uh an improved quality of a housing stock, if that is in fact an issue. Again, we're at the beginning of our process. But also understanding that preserving a lot of um the kind of neighborhood uh character, neighborhood quality and also the kind of affordability if and where it does exist, we wanna make sure we're preserving that as well. Uh, we have seen an increase, almost thirty percent of gross rent in the last ten years. That's a significant number. Uh, our median for twenty twenty-three for uh the median gross rent is over thirteen hundred dollars a month. Uh, and of course, as we know, the the kind of gross rent, there's only a a portion of what housing costs are. Uh, and as obviously we'll continue to talk about housing, we can talk a little bit more about all those things that make up our housing costs cuz it isn't just the mortgage or the rent. Home value has been skyrocketing uh in the last ten years. In some ways, this is good, maybe. In some ways, this is bad. Uh, it's kind of a double-edged sword. At some point, we like to see home values go up, especially for those of you who maybe already own their homes. But what we don't wanna see is it becoming a barrier for opportunities for younger families, for people who have the opportunities to maybe think about homeownership. Uh, so we do have a median home value in twenty twenty-three, uh, right around a hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, we're gonna have some access to more recent information than that. My guess is it's gonna, it's climbed even quite a bit more in the last uh year and a half, two years uh as well. We do have about seventy percent owner occupied units there. Um, you know, which isn't really up in that danger zone, you know, sometimes, which we see uh that some of those numbers creeping up in the, into the nineties. Some people like to see that, but actually that's not great for kind of a good active balance of your housing stock there. Uh, but, and that is a decrease that has come down a little bit in the last ten years. Again, let's remember that, um, you know, quite a bit of our world has changed since twenty fourteen. Uh, and then percent of vacant units here. In in twenty fourteen, the vacancy rate was about ten percent, so it's been cut in half in the last ten years. That is a good thing. We don't wanna see a lot of vacant homes around. It's not necessarily good uh for neighborhood character. In some cases, there's a lot of things that maybe vacancy can offer. That five percent is not a terrible number and especially as we see this trending in in a good direction since twenty fourteen. So again, uh, Mariah, I'll hand it back to you.
Yeah, so here we're gonna do the same things. I have the same question for you. When it comes to land use and housing, what's a number one goal that we should be trying to accomplish with this master plan in the next fifteen years?
I have a question first on on the um increase in median gross rent, and I know that since twenty fifteen. Um, does that include section eight?
Um, this is, no, so this would be mark, this is market rate. Um, so this is not, this, I don't believe this it would involve or include subsidized rents. Uh, so section eight vouchers or anything like that. This should be the market rate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And my question about the sixty-eight point nine percent owner occupied. Um, is a rental company considered owner occupied or what is the? Because I know that we have a whole lot of rental people, companies not being good neighbors.
So, uh, this, these are uh based on units. So these are owner occupied, like how many housing units and what percent of those are owner occupied? So again, according to these estimates, and one of the things that we can appreciate is that some of these estimates are not always great, uh, don't always paint the most accurate picture of communities. And that's why, you know, we lean so heavily into engagement to make sure that we are getting um uh uh hopefully a full uh accurate idea of what kind of experience there is on the ground. But this, according to, uh, these would be Census Bureau numbers. Uh, here, almost seventy percent of the units have the people who own the units living in them, according to these estimates.
Mr. Chair.
Sound accurate?
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, so you, so that you know, TPMA has all the GIS data um regarding our infrastructure and our properties, but they also combine, it was combined with the assessor's information on P R Es um and ownership and and things like that. And of course, as you know, John Myers is working because we know not all the vacancies and rentals are registered. So he's still working on that, but they do have all of our data.
So it's a work in process. And then I have a question.
All for the day, yes. Yeah, go ahead, please.
And I have a question about the increase in median home value. So in two thousand and seven, my house was worth a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Of course, we were also at the, at the apex of the bubble. And then uh two years later, the house next to me sold for twenty-six thousand. And I watched my hundred and sixty thousand dollar house go down to forty-something. And I, we all knew that it was going to take a long time for property values to come back.
Um, yes.
And it was, this, this community specifically was gutted uh more so than any other community in Macomb County. We, we bled and bled and bled and a lot of these, I'm gonna say it, these bottom-feeding rental companies swooped in like locusts on a verdant field and picked all these homes off for pennies on the dollar. So I, I, the, that number looks impressive, but in in my heart of hearts, I wonder how accurate it truly is if I look back to pre-two thousand and seven.
Yeah, again, the, the home value thing is is tricky, right? And I think that um, you, you know, while there are um the terrible situation that you kind of, that you're speaking to right now, um, you know, is a really difficult situation. We know East Point, how hard East Point was hit, right? Exactly. And and actually, we don't know what now hard. It's stories like yours that are gonna help us kind of fully get that, I, I day of that information. I think to your point, I think some people see a hundred and twenty-four percent in, a hundred and twenty-one percent increase as a really positive thing. And, you know, to your point, even in twenty fifteen, we're still kind of in a moment of recovery in, in a lot of communities uh from the market collapse in, you know, two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Um, I, that's why I'm almost hesitant to put a number like this on the screen for you today because it's a number without the kind of context and nuance that that again, your kind of experience can provide with it. I don't necessarily see this and think, oh, this is great, but I also don't necessarily see it and think it's awful. In some communities, a home value increase of this, you know, of this magnitude is really damaging. You know, puts a lot of things out of reach for a lot of members of the community. Here, I think to your point, some of that feels like recovery, maybe, in some cases. Um, and so, you know, this number, especially to a community like East Point here, has to have a lot of context and nuance with it. And it's a really, it's a difficult number just to look at. And again, just to go back, a lot of our data collection, which is not just quantitative and the information you're seeing in front of you, uh, but will be matched with qualitative, and that's the really important thing that we wanna do, um, is to try to continue to add a more nuanced, a more contextual understanding to what we're seeing here. We're just kind of at the beginning, a lot of these processes. So already hearing that kind of reaction is really helpful.
Aaron, if I can throw uh two cents into the pot to this afternoon, this evening, um, let's give some other, this is John Myers.
Um, yeah.
Just to give you some numbers in your heads as you're thinking at, the five percent of vacant properties, if that number is accurate, that's seven hundred and thirty-five homes that are vacant in your neighborhood. When you see empty spaces, that's the kind of house number you're thinking of cuz our population of residential dwellings are somewhere just over fourteen thousand. So you have to think that's your number you're talking about. Number two, we just dealt with a company that has bought three houses in the community that are in the six, the the nineteen fifties. And they bought them all between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, anticipate putting uh thirty thousand dollars into it, AKA, and intentionally are now, because they're gonna invest their own backdoor, their mortgage payment is nine hundred and ten dollars and they're gonna rent for thirteen forty-five. And so they're gonna hold it as a rental for the next five or seven years to co- collect back of what they put into their investment. So part of what Aaron's task is and this team's gonna be is help us to sort all these numbers out and help us develop a strong uh residential economic developed program. I mean, uh, in in the master plan for our housing stock, whether that is in vacancies that aren't registered. And and I would pretty much overguess that we're, we are over thirty-one percent uh rental property, which makes that means. And it's reason because developers are are finding it very comfortable to buy a hundred and forty thousand dollar house. It's really not marketable to the average income, economic household medium of our city. They'll gladly buy it and then rent it out for five to six hundred more than the mortgage will cover for them. And they'll pick up that piece. So that's what we have to borrow this team to help us um navigate through as we go forward. But those are some real facts, numbers in the last two weeks that we've dealt with on the street. And so if five percent's right, that's the kind of numbers you're still looking at. And some of them have been vacant for ten to fifteen years.
Yeah, I appreciate that, your comment there, John. And I think that's exactly right, you know. Try to like, again, try to move from a number like this or estimate like this, try to really like, what does that look like, right? What does that feel like, I know, on the streets, in the neighborhood, walking around? When we talk about affordability, cuz I think you brought this up briefly, um, I just wanna say, so we see that the median gross rent we talked about, over thirteen hundred dollars, thirteen thirty-five. And again, my guess is it's, it's maybe even gone up since twenty twenty-three. Um, the twenty twenty-three uh median household income for a renter occupied household, right? So renters, uh, the median income for a renting household in twenty twenty-three was forty-three, five, twenty. Um, the, one of the things that we can compare that to is this rental number here. So the median renting family is bringing in forty-three, five, twenty. Based on what we consider to be an affordability threshold, so, you know, maybe, maybe you already know this, but the, the target, I guess, for uh what they call a house burdened uh household is a household that spends more than thirty percent of their household income on housing costs. So that, that thirty percent threshold is really important. If it goes over thirty percent, that is when the ability to afford uh transportation, uh, food, clothing, uh, maybe education, some of the other kind of uh necessities of life become kind of threatened by how much housing is costing. So does everybody kind of follow what I'm saying there? That thirty percent threshold is what we're looking for. For uh that median household that earned forty-three, five, twenty in twenty twenty-three, that affordability threshold for all of housing costs, not just rent. So that also might be uh utilities, right? It might also be renters insurance in this case. All of that uh would be affordable at essentially a thousand dollars, almost eleven hundred dollars. So the median rent was just rent, as only a portion of housing costs, was already over two hundred dollars more than the median renting household could afford. And again, that was in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are gonna pull more recent data to try to get a, a. We are gonna pull more recent data to try to get a, you know, an even more accurate picture on the ground today. But, you know, that kind of difference between what families are earning and what families are expected to pay for their housing costs is something that we want to really take a special and close look at for East Point and try to define and put into terms that is hopefully kind of usable, right? What does affordability really mean for East Point? We're gonna look at those jobs, Teresa was already talking about kind of average wages. We're gonna look at the jobs, we're gonna look at housing costs, we're gonna look at what families are earning and try to get a sense, not only about what affordability means for East Point, but also what's available at an affordable range for these families. So it's not just establishing that threshold, what does it look like? What kind of jobs can earn, you know, essentially, a, a comfortable rent, you know, ability to rent comfortably, to live comfortably? But also on top of that, how many units in those areas kind of exist? So even as we think about maybe trying to attract and bring in the higher earning workforce, we also want to think about what housing exists, both as an opportunity to kind of bring families in, but also we want to make sure, you know, that there is affordability across the board. And we're trying to focus on making sure that that's attainable for people as well.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes.
One of the, not, not to speak for John, but one of the issues that we're finding is, he is finding, is that so many of the rentals are subpar, that people are, you know, too many people in a house, just so many conditions that are bad. So, you know, we're looking for support, we're, we're moving forward to propose changes to the ordinances, to council, to have better hammers, but we're looking for support from planning.
Well, it seems to me this is the prime opportunity for us to make ordinance changes to correspond with future development and what we're doing forward. So we need to be able to put some tools in the toolbox to affect change now.
Absolutely.
And to set, set the table for the future. And I don't know what everyone's timeframe is like, I don't know what your, your timeframes are like, but if we were to stick to the true meeting of one hour, we have ten minutes. So let, let me poll my peers here before we.
I just wanna say something real quick. Kim, piggybacking off of what you just said, so what I've noticed and kind of, I don't know, pay attention to lately, because it cracks me up, right, in a sad way, that when you're driving around, you see these houses that look a hot mess with overgrown lawns and, you know, porches that are deteriorating. But that car in the driveway is shiny and, and I just wonder why people's priorities, I shouldn't say backwards, I, you know, you do you, right? But I guess that's what makes me sad, that when you put more pride in your vehicle than you do your investment of where you live. And, yeah, I do, will ordinance changes take care of that? And do we have the manpower to enforce it?
Mr. Chair, if I could add to the subject, and Aaron is right about what he's describing, but many of the homes we're now discovering in the city have been built prior to nineteen sixty, probably in the late forties after the war. They were matchbox design, hurry up, get a lot of people home from the war and get them back into factories for building American product lines. And this was a great part of the country to do that in. But in it, we've now discovered that his numbers of thirteen something for rental are closer to fifteen to seventeen. And many of these homes, and I don't mean that cavalier, are, are being rented for four bedrooms when by law, they're only illegally allowed to be two. And they're taking that stack. So what Aaron's talking about is right, we have to figure out how to clean up our, our houses now while we're waiting for this process to get through so that we can prepare for a more accurate affordable income, affordable housing stock that's in our city that we have presently. And yes, whether we have the manpower or not, it's still a job we have to do if we're going to take care of the people that want to live in this city, life, health, and safety.
So are we okay going past seven o'clock?
I'm okay if it, you know, keeps, keeps it on track and we need to cover everything we need to cover.
Mrs. Moody, how do you feel?
I'm good.
You're good? Ms. Raferd?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
I appreciate that, but I, I also promise, we're gonna move quickly the rest of the way, okay?
Yeah, we got Big Mouse, so you might think you're gonna move quickly, but you do you.
I'll do my best, and then, you know, but you're in good company if, if you're talkers with me in the room. So let me just say, one of the things that we think about placemaking, both, you know, kind of in, in, in like the land use and the commercial corridors and the economic development, this is a really big thing. I know that it's been a focus of the city as we've seen, just, we just kind of pulled two quick examples of, of some efforts that have been really focused on kind of public art, placemaking, as we talked already about kind of walkability, right? Communal spaces, gathering spaces. When, when we looked at the survey results from the Nine Mile Corridor Plan, these were the top five desired developments for that, for that district, for that corridor. What I see here is what we've already talked about a little bit. I see opportunities for people to be in spaces together, supporting local businesses, but also kind of having, you see parks, we see kind of breweries, maybe nice restaurants, farmers markets. These are places we're hearing people want to have, places where they can convene, they can be together, but also have small businesses, right, that are like kind of built there with an eye for the community. Maybe those business owners would live in the community as well. And so I see a lot of the things that we've already kind of talked about, we talked about economic development here also in some of the priorities that were established during the survey for that as well. So I think if it's okay with you, Mariah, and just in the interest of time, maybe, because I think we heard quite a bit about placemaking already, I think in some of the answers we've gotten, just want to see.
Aaron, real quickly, we just got a warning on the screen about five minutes, is your stuff, does your teams go over?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we shouldn't get kicked off, if that's, if that's a question, yeah, it's just, it's just telling me to, you know, let's keep it moving. That's what they're trying to tell me here. So the other thing that we want to think about, and we don't want to completely pass over and are gonna be parts of a lot of our process here, is also transportation and infrastructure and community services, natural resources and environment as well. So even though we didn't kind of touch on those here today, it was in an interest of, of keeping things moving. But those are obviously things, so what we're also gonna want to talk about is what some of those priorities might be moving forward in those spaces as well. And we're gonna have an opportunity to do that. So just really quickly, there is, a lot of this data is available on SEMCOG's website. When you get this slide deck distributed, you can click here, or of course, you can just go to SEMCOG. If you go to the Community Explorer map, or there's just so much data at the, at the SEMCOG website, highly recommend you check, take a look at some of that for yourselves. As we released a press release for this project, we asked a couple of questions that I think we want to keep our eye on, and this is just in that, in that vein of creating this notion of, of vision, of a shared vision, trying to understand what it is that you, as the planning commission, what residents, community members, elected officials, think about, what is working, what's so great about East Point? We don't want to put a plan together that kind of, you know, makes significant changes to some of those things that everybody already loves about your community. And these are just some of the questions we, we put in front of people. We didn't have a huge response to this survey, but really, it was just kind of in a press release. We have a much, much larger survey that's gonna cover a lot of these bases, as Mariah kind of already touched about on earlier. So moving forward then, we're gonna meet again, I think the plan is to meet monthly with this group. We're gonna keep trying to check in, we're not gonna take the full hour every time, I hope. But one of the things that we are gonna do, where we've gone through, we're already kind of digesting the last master plan. One of the things that we're gonna work on is we're gonna put a worksheet together for you. And we, so we're gonna give you a little bit of homework, look for an email from us here, maybe in the coming days, maybe sometime next week. We're gonna kind of start to track some of the goals, some of the strategies that we're seeing in that plan, and maybe some of your other plans. And we'd like for you, if you have the time, to kind of go through and work on this worksheet for us. And we're gonna try to see, how are we doing with some of those goals? Where are we making the biggest strides? Where maybe we haven't made the biggest strides? Are those goals still some of the goals? How would we tweak them now that it's been, you know, a number of years here? So we are gonna send you with some homework after today, and then, you know, we'll look forward to meeting you again next week. And that was it, look, I did my job, it's six fifty-nine right now, okay? So I'm just saying.
And you dropped homework on us.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the homework was my request, so don't blame it on them.
Can you do my projections for the next two years, taking in tariffs from China?
No, no, maybe they can help you with that. But real quick, yes, homework was my idea because you guys, we have been praising all of you as a commission and everything, and how dedicated you guys are, and how thorough you are with every project that you review, so.
Sell boots.
So, yes, one of the things we talked about with TPMA was setting up perhaps a special meeting before every regular planning commission meeting. If we could do it at six P M., it would not be as formal. And of course, if there are members that can't quite make it. But the goal would be that at six P M., those Tues, Thursdays?
Thursdays?
Thursdays, that we would have, have, work with TPMA at six P M. If there was something that needed to be voted on or more official, we could then add it to the seven P M. agenda where we would, you know, ensure that we have a quorum and, and have, of course, reach here. But that way would give sort of a work session, enough time for that, a little bit of time for a break, and then we would start at seven. So we're hoping that, that would work for this commission, please.
I can make that work.
Yeah, we're good, I'm good.
I, I'm definitely good with that idea also.
So I have a request, because Sheila and I are the only survivors of the last master plan. The tedious, long, painful meetings. Hours and hours. However you approach this, reasonable chunks. Don't speak over the heads of people, because that deck that you're gonna provide us, hopefully, the city will be able to get it onto the website. And we might have an audience of five or six people somewhere out in the, in the darkness, like, you know, Gorilla Swanson and Sunset Boulevard, the little people in the dark, you never know. But we, we need complete transparency, small chunks of, small chunks, speak at us like we're idiots, you know? We, you know, the legalese is wonderful, the planners' speak is wonderful, we're average Joes here.
Bottom line is dumb it down.
Thank you.
Chair, I, you know, just wanted you to say that, because I was just sitting here a moment ago and I was saying, my anxiety level just blew off the chart, because we're new to this, we're new to this. And of course, we had the, the training with Michigan State. However, when it comes down to the real deal, it is very important, in my opinion, that everything is addressed in blocks, as you stated, and speak to us like we are.
Ninkabooze.
No, I don't wanna say ninkabooze, but, yes, we just, we're not that extreme. Exactly, exactly.
Mr. Chair, we will have a page on the website that is just devoted to this, but also to the groups.
What about old fashioned canvassing?
Hey, engagement, you gotta engage in whatever ways people are already there, so I, I'm, I have thick skin.
And then the music in the park?
I just wanna add that for those who are new to this process, there's always a starting point, right? So I would encourage you to, you could call us up on the side if you've got a question or email us and say, I don't understand this, please, can you, can you explain it to me? Please don't hesitate, I guess what I, what I want to say is, we're also here to help you learn about this process as well. We're not here just to feed you everything. So we're, we're, we want to come alongside you in this process, not, you know, have you, have, pull you with us. So if, if there's a way we can help you in the education process, and please just be transparent and honest with us. If you feel like we're going too fast, or if you need some information that we don't have, just, just give us a holler, we'll, we're there to help.
TPMA, will you guys, please, you have all their contact emails, will you create a group that they can then contact you guys?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll follow up, we can follow up with these, with these slides for you, send those out in email, and then that we, you'll have all of our contact information, and we can continue to kind of circulate things as we go. I think maybe a way to kind of combine, maybe some of the things that Kim said and some of the things Teresa said, and this is gonna sound cliche, so you'll just bear with me for just a minute. We very, very, very sincerely mean that we are looking for partners throughout this process, okay? There are, maybe you've already encountered them, maybe you haven't, but there are, you know, not everybody loves a consultant, okay? I'm open to that, I hear that. And I think part of that reason is maybe talk, that talking over your head, talking down to you, maybe it is, you, you might have encountered people who show up on day one, and then they show up when the report's ready and they hand it to you, and you've never heard from them in between, and maybe you won't hear from them after. It's just kind of not how we want to operate. And so whether that is, I used to be an English teacher, okay? So I don't mind a little interruption, somebody say, hey, excuse me, Aaron, can you say that again? But like, in a way that makes more sense or something like that, like, I'm good with that. And I, I'm pleased, I hope that we earn your trust and earn your interest in partnering with us in this process, helping us to communicate, helping us to build energy around this plan, helping us to get the survey out there and show up to events. You know, we really, really, truly feel sincerely that we, our success is, the only way to measure that is your success, you know? We get you a plan that means nothing to you, that has, that is not implementable, that doesn't make sense for your political climate or your resources or your staffing and capacity, nobody wins that way, like, nobody wins. And, and the last thing I want is, you know, whatever it is, five years from now, for you and Sheila, and maybe hopefully the whole commission is still here, if that's where you want to be, to say, oh, God, those last consultants, like, can we please do better than them? That's like, that's the last thing that we want. So please feel free to be open with us, ask us questions, and, and, you know, we're gonna be very feeling free to do the same to you. And hopefully, like, we could really work together on this. I'll just say last thing, I'm a talker, I'm sorry, but one of the things that's so exciting for us about this project, about this community, is Kim and John and Juanita and all of the excitement and the optimism. And everybody we talked to so far has said, this is East Point's moment, right? We need to make sure that this is our time, that we don't just kind of blow through this opportunity and that that's what this master plan is about, should be about, is making sure that, you know, like, we absolutely seize it. And so I think it's absolutely, like, just really exciting for us. I can't wait for you guys to meet the rest of the team as well, because there's a lot of enthusiasm for this project here on our team. And, and I can't wait to come meet you in person.
Aaron, I want to ask you a quick question. When we first started out tonight, it was four, one, two, it was four questions. And I don't know if you would answer this or John, but when we start the process, are we going to do it in stages? And are we going to address it according to those questions that he presented early, like, where are we now? Are we gonna spend time on, because it's four, one, two, four of us here that we have no idea where we are now. So we're gonna start out with the where are we now, and then we're gonna go to the next stage and say, where do we want to go? And then we're going to go to the next stage and say, "Where do we want to go?" So, that way, everything will eventually, you know, come together like a jigsaw puzzle that will make it, the process much easier for, for some of us.
I, I, hold on for a second. I, we're all in the same place. We all want one thing, so don't, don't think that you're not...
Oh, I agree.
We're all, we all want, there's only, we're, all of our oars and all of our boats are going in the same direction and we're all going to approach this as novices because this is a brand-new day. It's a clean slate. We're all starting at the exact same place. So, just...
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, if I can...
But to answer your question...
I love it, yeah.
So, sorry, I didn't...
Sorry, we ignore John all the time.
Anyway, I just, I just, yes, um, that's how we are approaching this on both the EDSP and the master plan, is where are we now? And, um, we'll give a very clear, what we call a benchmark. This is, this is where the, the line is and where are we going, right? So, in each step, we will ask that question.
Okay. Mr. Myers, would you like to make a response? No, not you. Mr. Myers has been waiting.
So, TPMA learned very early on that one of the rules we have at City Hall is if you're trying to leave the building, don't stop by John's office.
And they haven't even been here. Mr. Myers?
Thanks for the setup. Listen, I just wanted to coach for a minute because that's my teaching mechanism and many of you are new to this process. TPMA are the professors with the expertise background. You need to come to the table thinking you're the student that needs to pass, but you're the student that needs to study and prepare yourself for each of the questions that need to be answered. And if we stop at, "Where are we going?", we failed the class. We have to get to the next level that says, "How do we get there?" And that's what they're going to help feed us and lead us. You're the students. You don't have to have the answers. You just have to be able to clarify what the question is so that when you have to take the scoring test at the end of the day, you can answer the question, "Where are we really, where are we?" And how, where we want to go. And then, "How do we get there?" So, it's not an energy of, "How do I figure out the answers?" They already have all the skill sets for us. We now need to be able to make sure that we speak wonderfully for the future of this city and all the generations and all the ethnic groups that are going to live here in the next 15 years. And so, excitement is about what you get to learn in the journey of helping your neighbors that you haven't even seen because you live on the other side of town and from the people that need help differently than your side of town. You're the student body that needs to help it and they need to know and you, they already know, we don't need another zoning map. We need a roadmap. How do we get to the future and successfully get there? All the good questions and comments you made are the questions that you entered a, a class tonight and said, "I have these concerns, how do we answer them?" You'll make it as long as you remember that your students, every week, every month, when we get here for a half hour earlier to get questions answered and said, that gives you a chance to brainstorm and study and prepare for the answers that need to fix and strengthen this city in the next five years, in the next 10 years, and in the next 15. You'll do well when you remember. You're not an idiot, blooming idiots. You are students that are being invited to accelerate your knowledge, wisdom, experience from a professor that wants to make you succeed. And the only way they succeed is if you've learned how to play, then take the test and succeed for the city behind you.
You can now drop the mic.
I feel like we should be clapping at this point.
Right, exactly.
Well, if it's tough, well, I was a notoriously easy grader, so, you know, you can, you don't need to go...
There's been enough failure, it's time to succeed.
You mean you're not grading on the curve?
That's that new math.
Oh, no. No.
All right. Anything else from you folks?
Not, I don't think from us. This, this, this was a joy to get a chance to come talk to you today. You can ask Kim. I, I offer, I said, "I'll drive up there if that's what it takes. I'm happy to be there in person." She said, "Not this time. Uh, we'll have a chance to see you just in a couple of months." We got, we've got a lot of work to do to get ready for that as well. Uh, we'll look forward to seeing you all, uh, next month and, uh, and, you know, similar situation to this, but we, we're really excited and, and so, so, so happy to meet you all and participate in this conversation today.
Well, we kindly thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
And you'll have to pardon us and put up with our humor as we're trying to get through things. That's how we cope.
See, if you were here, you could go to the bar tonight with us.
We'd be there if we were here. We'd be there. And by the way, just so you all know, I'm a Michigander. I grew up in the Grand Records area and I have a lot of close friends who, who are from the Detroit area, so, love it. I'm glad to be a part of this and, and, uh, be a part of the team in the Michigan area.
At least you didn't tell us you were from Ohio.
Um, that would be O-H.
Uh-oh, Aaron. Black out your screen, Aaron.
Oh, Lord.
You don't need to talk about where I'm calling from right now. It's okay. You don't need to get into it.
All right.
Oh, come on, inquiring minds want to know.
He's in Columbus, isn't he?
I'm here in Dayton, Ohio. I was in Columbus, but I had to get out.
Aaron, you're our favorite.
It's time to call this meeting.
Second.
All right, moving on. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you so much, really. This was great. Kim, John will talk to you soon. Let us know if you need anything. And again, we'll get to work on getting that worksheet over to you guys. Get an email from us here, uh, pretty soon.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. You're welcome.
Moving on to the hearing of the public. You have three minutes to speak. Be nice. The podium is yours. Does anybody wish to be heard? Does anybody wish to be heard? Please write your name on the sheet of paper that should hopefully be at the...
Mr. Chair, we need one minute.
Okay.
Electronically.
Hold on for a second. We have technical difficulties. I don't read this.
Reworking.
Reworking.
Yes.
Okay. How about them tigers?
How about them tigers? You know, I was really a little upset because I have Saturday's game and it was supposed to be school ball. And then, um, A.J. Hinch decided to switch school ball and Mies and now I'm sad. Not that I don't like Mies.
Okay. You have three minutes. You have three minutes to speak.
Okay. Ah, now you can hear me. First of all, my, my apologies. I completely forgot about the meeting. I was just on my way up here, um, to do my compost and I've been doing yard work all day and I forgot my mask. So, that's why I've got my hand in my shirt covering my... I'm in a high-risk category, so that's why I always have a mask on in public, um, uh, venues. Anyways, so my comments are, I saw some of the questions in regards to the survey. Again, I forgot about that sadly. I've gotten to the point, if I don't write stuff down, I forget. Where would I want to see or what do I want to see, uh, happen for East Point 20 years from now? Gosh, you know, wouldn't it be nice if it was, uh, you know, peaceful, civilized, um, that we, you know, were, were able to attract people with disposable income, that, um, you know, East Point had extremely well-paying jobs. In fact, not just jobs, but careers. Um, we don't have that right now and, uh, unfortunately, we, we have the antithesis. Yesterday morning, I was over at 38th District Court as key witness for our city attorney and we heard the call come in over on the radio and at first it sounded like it was just somebody having a meltdown in the drive-thru at McDonald's, you know, didn't get their order, was melting down, wouldn't leave. Well, unfortunately, we found out the manager was stabbed to death. This is what we have going on here in East Point. And I've been here 18 years. So, yeah, I bought my house in 2007 and then, you know, the market and the economy crashed, so did the value of my home. I've also watched my block go to hell in a ham basket. Um, I mean, my block is overrun by renters, bad runners. We, yeah, you know, like you mentioned, you had investors come in and just buy up all the houses like locusts and they couldn't have cared less about who they rented to. And so, now you have all these, you know, rental properties, they treat 38th District Court like it's, you know, a revolving door. They have tenants that don't pay their rent in like, within two years, they've already been evicted four times for non-payment of rent, but they're still there. So, you know, I don't know how East Point is going to be able to turn all this around so that we have a thriving suburb with, you know, we're able to attract people with disposable income. Thanks.
Ken? Oh, there we go.
Jennifer Nicholas, East Point resident. Um, I'm impressed with this company. They seem like they know what they're doing and asking the right questions and seem like they'll be very helpful for the master plan. I just had two points. One, um, I noticed the slide in there of the Nine Mile Strategic Corridor Plan and is there any way that that can be removed or redone? I mean, that survey was done several years ago. I always felt that it was a little skewed toward the result that our planning firm wanted us to have. And I feel that this new firm, um, maybe it would be more helpful to them to not piggyback off of data from several years ago. Let's start fresh with everything. Um, second thing with that survey, that three-question survey, I did find it on the city website. I don't know, is there any way to publicize that more, um, just letting people know that you are working on a master plan? And those three questions on the survey were, um, were good. I mean, they were very insightful and I think it would, if there's a way to figure out to get that out to more people, um, either, you know, post it continuously on the city's Facebook page or the residents' page or, um, you know, some way that, uh, people are more aware of it. Or, I know you said canvassing, but maybe flyering, like you said, you know, Music in the Park or some other events like that, um, you know, with a QR code or something. I don't know. I don't have a smartphone, but I guess that's what people do. But whatever way to get people involved as early as possible, just to get more information to help guide this firm, um, so that everybody's represented and not just a few people. And that's it. Thanks again, um, for all your hard work.
Still, is working and not working? Sorry? That was the inner voice, bad John. Moving on to commissioners' comments, we'll start with Mr. Myers.
I have nothing for you this evening, sir.
Ms. Holman?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Albright?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, as the commissioners are all aware, uh, the city council, uh, denied special land use approval for MPX Common Citizen, uh, at, uh, its meeting back in, uh, June. Uh, the following week, on Wednesday, our office was served with a lawsuit from, uh, MPX Common Citizen. That case, uh, is currently in litigation. Tim Ferran's office, who handles the, uh, MMR MA appointments, um, he's providing the defense. Our office is assisting him with that. Uh, I'm happy to provide any updates as the case goes through litigation process. Typically, you know, I, I keep, uh, the city council updated, but as the planning commission had an active role, uh, in the events leading up to the city council making its decision, I'm happy to provide, uh, this commission with updates as well as they come in.
We only make recommendations.
Duly noted.
Mr. Stokes?
Good seeing you all. I look forward to working with you all on this master plan.
Chris Yulinski?
Say my name and laugh.
You always put a smile on my face.
Wait, you sell boots?
Yes.
Um, I don't have anything work, uh, well, looking forward to working on this new one. Excited with this group. They seem to be a, a good cheerleader and a, a good fit to really put something in, in action, um, and a little more and hopefully it's not as tedious as the last one was. I thank you two for all that you do and finding the right people and, and always guiding us. Lord knows we need it. Um, but yeah, hope everyone's enjoying their summer.
Ms. Moody?
Um, I don't have anything, nothing today. Thank you.
Ms. Rayford?
I'm just looking forward to getting started. I have a lot of ideas and I will not be quiet. So, I'll let other people talk, but...
Inside voice.
I will.
No social media.
Mr. Sasek?
So, I just would like to, uh, inform the commission, the planning commission that last night at the Parks Commission, I did mention to our commissioners that we were going to be moving forward with the five-year master plan and that Commissioner DeHunt had reached out to me feeling that, um, parks and green spaces within the community, whoops, I'm sorry, are a vital part of any good master plan and that we would be coming to them not only because they are commissioners, but because they are residents and they live in the various neighborhoods and they can reach out to their commu- their resident, their neighbors, I'm sorry. And so, hopefully, they will also be able to bring some valid ideas and recommendations to us as well. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Oh, Chair, I'm sorry. May I add something?
Yes.
John, can I ask, do you have an update on Auto Clinic?
I, I don't have an official... I don't have an official one. We are in the middle of a negotiation with them as we speak. So, let me give it to you as soon as it comes in. I'll be glad to email that back to you.
Yeah, just curious, only because, as you know, they've not listened to one thing and it just continues over there and more and more cars are on the gravel.
That's correct. So, it's, it is now, we, we've elevated it. We're still ticketing them. Every time they park something on the property, we ticket them at least twice a week. As of coming this next week, we'll go to three a, a week, uh, and identify, uh, sec- next steps with the city attorney as we meet next week.
And do we, what is going on with that lot on Eight Mile where the old Evergreen used to be and they turned it into grocery store and it burned down and the van that advertises junk cars, you know, that lovely space?
Two things are happening with it. It needs to be cut at a reasonable rate. Number two, we'd want to write violations against them for parking junk vehicles on it. But right now, the building department is still working towards getting the rights to residential driver's license of owners of properties. Once we have that, then we can go to 38th District Court aggressively with many property owners that don't have any, um, code, uh, any permit requirements. So, right now, if the city doesn't have a permit against you, uh, on your, on your property, whether it's rental, vacant, or, uh, a building permit, we don't have your driver's license access. And so, what we're doing right now is working with the city to make sure that we can have access to, um, a legal method of finding someone's driver's license who is in violation to our ordinance, such as this parking lot, and then begin to file against them.
Okay, thank you.
Short answer, ordinance changes.
We'll get on that.
So...
Chair, before, go ahead.
Go on.
Before, before, I want to use my train of thought here. Uh, with reference to, um, I'm sorry, I'm out of order, I know. When we were speaking of ways... When we were speaking of ways to get the information out to, to the residents, I was thinking of a couple of ways that the administration may want to consider being in contact with the neighborhood watch groups. That is a way. They may want to consider cost-effective mailing with the, the water bills or something like that, or in addition to canvassing, like you mentioned earlier. It's, it's, it's a plethora of ways that we can get the word out besides just being straight-lined to social media. So, it's just, I was just thinking about that when Mr. Sasseck said something, that we can go with the neighborhood watches, and then go to our other commissioners, and get those chairs of the other commissioners to get something out there like that. So, there's a number of ways that we can do that. We all should brainstorm later today.
Wouldn't it be fun if anybody running for office this fall would get those surveys while they're out there canvassing for their election?
That would be great. That would, that, I mean, it's not a bad idea.
And we are lucky that they have Juanita's counterpart on their team, and the two, the two ladies are working really well together in putting together a really comprehensive plan for outreach.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I have homework for both of you, since you're heaping homework on us. That's right, you can hide behind your piece of paper. Please outline the most significant ordinance changes that need to be affected immediately. And let's get on this immediately. And whatever we can do to assist, to recommend whatever, because we don't make decisions, we just recommend, whatever we can do to assist the building department, to assist the city council, to give you the tools that you need. Because all of this is lovely, it means squat if we don't have the enforcement, enforceability and the tools. So, this is the single most important thing that we can do in this city. You know, the procedural stuff, the site plans and all that, that's all great. This is the single most important thing that we can do. And if we get it right, we're golden. If we screw it up, we have what we have now. And you're never going to change hateful people on those vile Facebook groups. You're never going to change the, the negative Nellies, the naysayers, the ones that the sky is always falling, you're never going to change them. But we have to find the people that see the sky for being blue, as opposed to being black. We need to find those individuals that are going to be willing to step up. So, if anybody knows anybody that wants to be part of a steering committee that will probably happen in the future, we need to get people on this. The sky is not falling, East Point is not the hellhole that the residents' group makes it out to be. There are plenty of people that love living in this city. Are things perfect? Absolutely not. But you name me one community that is absolutely perfect, you will not find that place. Maybe Nirvana, maybe up, up above, who knows? But on this planet, no place is perfect, and you cannot control bad actors. Thank you for letting us know about Common Citizen. Saw that one coming, didn't we?
Oh, yeah, we did.
Thank you all for everything. I know we said an hour, and it's an hour and a half. So, we're done. Can I get a motion to close the meeting? We have a motion, support, and a third.
Can somebody tell me who did what, please?
So, motion.
Yes. And a fourth. We'll say Ms. Moody, motion, motion for Ms. Moody seconded by Ms. Rayford, thirded by Mr. Stokes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall Rayford?
Yes.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes.
Commissioner Sasseck?
Yes.
Commissioner Yulinski, yes, and Chairman DeHunt?
Yes.